I mean, I mean, for her to go into her own pockets to do something which she felt important for a student, that's admirable, but she shouldn't have to do that. And and that's really was my motivation for creating the foundation.
Welcome to the S G V Master Key, a show where you will hear personal stories of triumph over failures and how others successfully navigated the unique landscape that is the San Gabriel Valley. What makes us different? Well, just like you, we have chosen the San Gabriel Valley for our home or businesses or both. We believe it is the people and small businesses that make this community great, and we love to share their stories with you. We always encourage your questions and feedback, and you can find all of our contact information at sgvmasterkey.com. Here are the hosts for the show, Russell Mano and Scott Warment.
All right, welcome back to another episode of the S G V Master Key. Glad to have you with us again, hope to bring you another interesting episode with another interesting guest. You know, it's 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 different when you guys are not hearing the intro, right?
Yeah, this is the second time that I have never heard it.
Yeah, it's sort of, you know, for me, it gets me ready for the show. And you know, for the listening audience, all that means is now Scott and our guest don't wear the headphones, right?
Right.
But so anyways, I got to hear the intro and I'm ready to do the show. So, you know, our guest today is another one of your your close friends, right?
Yeah, he's one of the the good guys in the San Gabriel Valley, I would say. And I would introduce him as a politician, but I prefer to introduce him as a community servant, because I think there's this class of person that goes into public service, knowing that that's what they're going into and choosing to go into it for all the right reasons, you know, as opposed to a politician, which doesn't sound as good, you know.
Sure.
But I've known this guest for many years and I've I've seen how he has always been a community servant, always working in the community. And I think, as I remember, he was probably on the library board or the school district board when I first met him. Now, today, he's the mayor of Monterey Park. And we're really pleased to have Mayor Henry Lowe as our guest today. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for having me.
Yeah, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
So I guess it was a school district position that you were
Yes.
probably involved in, say, ten fifteen years ago, right?
Actually seventeen years ago.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years ago, I was elected to serve on the Garvey Elementary School District Board Education.
Uh huh. Which takes in the Monterey Park and Alhambra Schools, right?
Monterey Park, well, portion of Monterey Park, San Gabriel Rosemead and unincorporated South San Gabriel. It's a K two eight elementary district.
Okay, and so Russell, our co-host, is was a graduate of
Mark Kepel.
Mark Kepel.
Yeah, I grew up in Monterey Park.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Oh, I'm very honored to be in the room with you then.
Yeah, and that's my old stomping grounds.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
So were you were you born and raised here in the San Gabriel Valley?
Interesting question. I was born in Los Angeles Chinatown. In fact, I like to tell people that I'm part of what I call old school, because I was born in Bozen in nineteen seventy five at the Old French Hospital. And I think many people of a certain age or generation will remember that was what the hospital was called, but I was born in Chinatown. I think I spent maybe the first four or five years of my life living in the Chinatown area before my parents went further east. And actually, they they bought a home in the most northeastern edge of Los Angeles in the Old Sereno area. But when I think about the San Gabriel Valley, it still very much was a part of my life, aside from, you know, geography and demarcations, because probably as as early as I can remember my childhood, my parents would often come to places like Monterey Park to their shopping, to their business. They had friends who lived there. It had a community of people that seemed familiar to them culturally, linguistically. And it's interesting, because, you know, I think oftentimes when we ask people who are immigrants or newcomers to this country, like, what is their ideal of the American dream? How is it expressed and personified? And I think to my parents, the San Gabriel Valley was probably in their mind of what it would be like to reach our American dream, to be able to live in a peaceful community that had good schools and quality of life amenities. And I think that when I became a council member, elected in March of twenty twenty, and now I'm the mayor, I think for them, that was a realization that someone that, you know, their their son was able to, you know, achieve what they always viewed as, you know, that American dream realized.
Wow, that's an amazing story, because they must not only be proud, but then they must feel their life was a success, that that what they visualized was success, you actually accomplished.
Yeah, well, I I think even though they're they're very typical parents, they would never say it out loud. But I think maybe in private, there is a source of pride. I would hope so. But, you know, when I do think of my parents and what they achieved, I actually do believe that they are a success story. Although my parents were not highly educated, you know, my father had maybe a middle school education. My mother had, I think, an elementary school education, and they worked seven days a week. But they somehow earned enough. My dad was a machinist. My mother worked in the garment industry. But they somehow were able to earn enough to buy a humble home, to put food on table, and and essentially ensure that I had a safe, nurturing place to learn. And I think that people like my parents do inspire me, because they represent that work ethic of what I think often attracts people to come live in the United States. And I suppose I could also segue into why I have an interest and have pursued a career in public service civic engagement. And I think part of this because as much as I admire my parents and the opportunity they gave me, but I've always felt that, you know, people like my parents should never have to struggle as hard as they did, which is often the case of people with their type of backgrounds. And I think that especially later, when I became, when I had the opportunity to run for school board at the Garvey Elementary School District, I really seized upon opportunity to put my passion, my interest in equity issues as a school board member, because when I look at places like the Garvey School District, eighty percent of the parents there, eighty percent of the families there probably qualify for free and reduced meal. And for many of the children attending that school district, they will be probably the first in their family to go on to higher education. And their backgrounds are very similar to mine. And I think that's why I did devote over two, nearly twenty years on board education to really raising the visibility of that district and also how we could bring resources to realize the goals and aspirations of the students and the families that that they represent.
Were your parents, were they immigrants?
Yes, they were.
Where did they come from?
Um, well, they were by way of Hong Kong, but they're from the Gongdong area of China, which a lot of Cantonese-speaking Chinese hail from. My parents, I think, well, they came together at different periods of time. I think my mother in the nineteen sixties, my father nineteen seventies, and they met in the Bay Area, San Francisco, married and somehow ended up here in Los Angeles.
Do you speak Cantonese?
I do, although my mother not very well. But but I suppose good enough that at least professionally, I've been able to use that to get by.
Can't you tell, Russell, we talk so much about people having passion, you know, that you see success when people have passion to do something. Can you see this passion for what he does? I mean, I'm quite impressed, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it's something I naturally seek out in people, because that's where they're most fulfilled, happiest, and they do their best.
Yeah, and you just are doing what you want to do, what you feel is the I mean, you must feel lucky, a lucky person, right?
Oh, absolutely. I I do. Even in the career that I have now, well, although we talked about my positions as a local elected official, but my, well, my day job, I've been very privileged to have served the San Gabriel Valley as a staffer for three of the legislators in this community, starting with State Senator Gloria Romero, to then Assembly Member Mike Ng, and more recently to Assembly Member Ed Chow. And I can probably count on twenty-two years of essentially being an advocate for a community that I've worked and lived in, where my parents have lived in, and be an advocate for legislators who have represented this community for many years in the state legislature.
Where was this passion born from?
I think I touched upon it earlier when I talked about my parents and that, you know, as I said earlier, you know, my parents worked very hard. They worked seven days a week. My my dad actually worked two jobs. My dad was a machinist, Monday through Friday on weekends. He worked at a Chinese restaurant. My mother was worked in the garment industry, and and I'm sure if they had shifts in the weekends, she worked them as well. So, you know, so on weekends, my mom was around. But as much as I I have said that, you know, they really personify that work ethic, I think especially you see with working class immigrants. But I've always said that, you know, they should not have to have worked as hard as they did. And I'm not, and I mean, in that, you know, I think sometimes we create a missile about the working class immigrant that pull themselves by their bootstraps. And that is quite a story that is very common. But I think it's also sometimes it's used to then ballyhoo over issues of inequity that we find in society, issues that we still deal with today, from unequal access to quality education, housing affordability, being able to find jobs that pay well. And as much as people will come up to me and say, when they hear my story, they think, well, it was a success story. And I said, yes, I will. I mean, I don't discount that my parents are hardworking, but I also say they were lucky, because they were lucky and in terms of the timing, they came to the United States where you could with a blue collar job, still be able to afford a decent, humble-sized home. Schools did have, you know, at least some degree of equity, although by the time I was entering the K two twelve system, California just passed Prop thirteen, and I believe that was the beginning of what we saw a dichotomy between affluence and working class communities in terms of education. And although I stand as someone who became the first in his family to go to college, but again, it's I do believe it is also a degree of luck and timing. And because I often say to people, if my parents were the same young people they were thirty years ago, with their skill set, I highly doubt they would be able to afford to buy a home or to send their kids to college, because it's so much more difficult to, I think, be able to be upwardly mobile. So I think that my upbringing has really instilled in me an interest in seeing how do we address inequality in our society?
You know, Garvey, when I was growing up, was like a feared school.
Oh, yeah? Are you an alumni of the Garvey District?
No, I went to Inez.
Oh, Inez, okay, okay.
But Garvey was thought of as a really problematic school where there was a lot of gangs and troubled kids.
Yeah.
I remember that. Who knows, maybe people thought of Inez as like that, but Garvey for a certain was was also, I think, located in a very difficult neighborhood, you know?
I would say that one of the goals I sought to address by becoming a school board member for the Garvey District, and this was in two thousand and three when I was first elected, was, you know, I wanted to see, you know, how could we change the image of the district, also raise its profile in order to bring in more resources? And, you know, one of the things that I'm very proud of is that we co-founded a education foundation. It was now known today as the Garvey Education Foundation. But I remember at the time, there was a skepticism, because there was a presumption that foundations only exist for wealthy school districts. And and even if we did create a foundation, how much can we realistically raise, you know, for the district programming? And I and I and I challenged that assumption, because I said, well, fine, we're not San Marino. I'm sure if we start a foundation, we will never have a million dollars. But every little bit counts, and even if all we do is raise ten thousand, and I'm happy to say that actually, by the time I left the school district board, we went from nothing to a hundred thousand dollars. But it also is a vehicle to instill community pride, because you're talking about engaging parents, alumni, teachers, local businesses to invest in their public schools. And I think that that made a lot of difference, and and I think creating a more positive image, because because if you have a community that's willing to invest in schools, then surely these are schools that have merit and and should be looked at for, you know, not in the service of, you know, who attends, but also as how they have the opportunity to help all students who go through its doors realize their full potential, which is what I think is the function of our public schools in the United States.
How do you sell that concept to a community of like immigrant parents who, you know, maybe that that seems tough?
You know, I, yeah, perhaps, you know, but at the same time, what I found is that parents, even if they are, you know, working like my parents did, you know, seven days a week to put food on table, but they also understand the importance of education. And somehow they will find that extra hour to volunteer, say, with a P T A, or they'll somehow find that extra cash to buy a ticket to stay for a foundation dinner, because you know, for a lot of parents, either if they are newcomers to this country or they've lived here, but they have dreams for their children to be successful, you know, they somehow are able to give two hundred percent of themselves to help their kids. And so I think that when we created the foundation, it really was a challenge. It was not a challenge to convince that community, because they understood its significance, because the money raised would go into extracurricular programming. And actually, I'd like to back up and even explain my motivation and the inspiration to starting the foundation, you know, with fellow school board members and other stakeholders. But I will always remember it was I would say probably my first year on the board education, and it was open house. And for those of you who are familiar, you know, schools will probably, you know, mid, sort of mid mid-year of the academic year have open house for the parents to come in and see what the kids have done and for projects that they have worked on in class. And I will remember that I came across a classroom where there was a bowl of salad. And I thought, oh, okay, well, that must be the refreshment. And so, you know, because I had helped myself to a little bowl of salad. But I later found out from the teacher that actually the salad I ate came from vegetables that were grown on a plot of land right outside of her classroom. And that project was to teach students the importance of nutrition, but also agriculture, because, you know, we live in an urbanized area, and I think for many of us, we assume, well, you go to market and there are the milk and the meat and the vegetable, you know, something just magically appears in the aisle, you know, and even though there is an entire agriculture that goes into what the food you find on your table. So I was very impressed. But then I, as a follow-up question, I asked the teacher, oh, well, how did you get all the materials? You know, the implements, the tools, the seeds. And this teacher said she paid out of her own pockets. And although I I was impressed by that, but I was a little horrified, horrified, because I thought to myself, well, you know, bravo for this teacher, but I don't think she should have to do that. I mean, I mean, for her to go into her own pockets to do something which she felt was important for a student, that's admirable, but she shouldn't have to do that. And and that's really was my motivation for creating the foundation, so that the money we raise, again, as I mentioned, I mean, a hundred thousand, but the hundred thousand, if you think about it, can go a long way to, as a grant, to that same teacher who wants to buy some seeds, some tools from Home Depot. Again, I know it's not expensive, but again, the idea is that you shouldn't have to pay for yourself, your community, out of its hopes and dreams and aspirations, where students should be able to support your efforts and endeavors.
Every every teacher that I've ever known, like, does that?
And that's admirable. But again, as I've said, they shouldn't have to do that. And that, and if the fact, if teachers still today are still doing that, then I think that's an indictment of of where we are into them investing in our schools.
I agree with you. It's always surprised me. Yes, the teachers do that, because they care. But that is so not right to me.
I agree.
And so that's what your foundation that you set up was meant to help address, yeah.
Yeah, I don't I don't want to even get into what teachers are paid here compared to other countries, but, you know, there's such a priority on on teachers and and that as a profession that, you know, where is that here?
Yeah, I mean, I could probably spend a whole hour talking about that, because, again, although I've I'm now currently in year two of my term in the city council, but because I served seventeen years prior to city council on school board, yeah, I mean, I mean, there are so many issues that I've worked on, that I've paid attention to, that I actually still care about. Because now that I'm a council member, you know, one of my goals as a council member was to make sure that the city of Monterey Park had good relationships with its schools, because and as someone like you, Russ, who grew up in the area, you probably know that Monterey Park is actually served by four, I think, five school districts. And I've made sure that the city of Monterey Park works closely with its school districts. And that's because, you know, when we talk about local communities, we shouldn't be talking about silos, meaning that, you know, here's the city, here's the school district, here's the community college, here's the water district, because again, these are all artificial silos. And when we talk about community, you know, we should really be asking ourselves, how do we lower those silos and try and build bridges with the holistic goal of helping the community that we all serve?
I'm interested in whether you think the Monterey Park that you live in today is better than it was, you know, when you when you went there. That's one part of the question. The second part of it is, what about the country? Because touching upon your parents' experience and that maybe today they couldn't have that same experience. But on the other hand, it sounds as if the community of Monterey Park or the city of Monterey Park is maybe in a better place than it was thirty years ago. I don't know. But what are your thoughts on that? And, you know, how optimistic are you about the future of, you know, both local and nationwide?
Sure. Well, let me start then locally. I think that the city of Monterey Park, we are blessed with a lot of advantages. And if I were to look at, say, now, you know, in terms of, say, its commercial retail development, city has made tremendous progress. And we have our marketplace off the Pomona Freeway. We just opened a new Marriott Hotel off Atlantic Boulevard. There's a hotel down street, which I think is a Holiday Inn. We've been welcoming new retail development, and and so that's good for the city in terms of sales tax revenue. I think during the pandemic, I came to really appreciate, as have many residents, that we have a lot of recreational spaces. Monterey Park has thirteen parks, which I think is wonderful, because because especially during a pandemic, people really came to realize how important it is to have those spaces for one's health and well-being. Monterey Park is still a very premier destination, because it's known for its restaurants and its schools. So I think the Monterey Park certainly has made a lot of progress. However, going below the surface, I think Monterey Park, like all communities, have a lot of serious issues. When I look at, you know, what are we doing to address climate change on our part? What about traffic and public safety? Because many commuters use our streets as ways of bypassing the freeways that are congested themselves to get home, so there's a traffic issue. But and also housing affordability, because, you know, one of the things that I have noticed is that and it's not unique to Monterey Park, but because housing California has become so expensive, it's had a very adverse impact on communities, you know, people who may have grown up in the community they live in, who want to stay can't, because renting is expensive, buying, or perhaps empty nesters who want to remain and stay in their community, but don't need a big house anymore, stay in those homes, because they can downside, because again, there's nothing in the market for seniors with a fixed income. And I even tell my people that, you know, I myself, I mean, the home I bought thirteen years ago, it's gone up so dramatically, I'd say thirty, forty percent, that I don't think I could afford to live in the I don't think I could afford to buy the home I live in now. And so that really should be a concern to all of us, because what's happening is that when we don't address quality of issues, then it may drive people to look elsewhere. And that could be outside of the San Gabriel Valley, or even outside the region, or even outside of state. And I think that these are a lot of important issues that we need to work on. And to your broader question about the country, you know, I I do have concerns about as much as as people like to use the term about the American dream, and I just did during my conversation with you, but I think there are those who've been asked, is that just cliche now? Because, you know, is is that potential for upward mobility really there for everyone? Or is it becoming more and more only for an elite class of the few? And so I think that we have serious equity issues that we must address. And I think if we don't address, then that gives rise to a lot of negative consequences to our public discourse. And when you when you look at the rise of xenophobia, anti-immigration sentiment, class struggles, that all comes from insecurities that more and more Americans are feeling, you know, I mean, you know, there are books out there. I think one book called Nickelled and Dimed, and it means, you know, how the system is in some ways leaving many Americans behind. And I think if we don't address those issues, then we'll see the type of demagoguery we have seen at our national public discourse.
And I believe real strongly that local is the most fundamental and important part of the chain in American society, you know? Just what are we doing locally? Are we taking care of our schools? But you're right, the inequity of, you know, a school district here versus a school district there, you know, that really cuts away at this this traditional, strong, local base that that America, I think, has always depended on.
Yes.
You know, I remember Monterey Park, Hellman and Atlantic, the southeast corner was a fruit stand.
Oh.
Just to, you know, he would raise up his his gates in the morning, and I think the other side maybe was like Hong Kong supermarket or something. I know Monterey Park was initially built to be like another Beverly Hills.
I think that's what it was. I think you're referring to in the late, say, the early eighties, when it was being promoted to, you wouldn't say Taiwan. I think, yeah, it was like called the Chinese Beverly Hill, even the Chinese name that is supposed to be, I guess, the Chinese name that's still used today to describe Monterey Park, Mengsa. I think the translation is like lush park, you know, and so it was meant to like be this very, you know, desirable place. And again, it is, I mean, eighty percent of our topography is our hills. I mean, so, yeah, I mean, it is like a Beverly Hills, if you want to look at it that way, because so much of our homes are built on hillside, and I think that's what attracts people.
Yeah, I did a, I think it was a mayor badge on, you know, the city that you live in, and and I think that the Beverly Hills thing goes back to its inception, but that's kind of that's kind of scary to think of a Monterey Park where the people who built, made that community what it is, can no longer afford to live there. That's a, that really changes the whole community.
Absolutely. And and again, it's not unique to Monterey Park. I think it's happening throughout the state. Actually, I would even say it's throughout the country, because, you know, one reads so many different news articles and reports, and I could, and I feel like I I can't remember where I read this, but I think I did read somewhere that there really is nowhere in America now, anywhere in the United States, where you could live a decent life based on minimum wage, because I think maybe at some point, there was presumption that, okay, well, California is an expensive place to live in. Perhaps if you lived elsewhere that had a lower cost of living, then that dollar could be stretched more. But I'm, I think I've read somewhere that really nowhere in the United States can can one live a very basic existence, even with minimum wage, because the inequalities we're seeing here in California, we see everywhere in this country.
Yeah, I was recently driving through North Dakota, seeing the gas prices there and then talking to the taxi guy. And even though, you know, their wages are lower, the cost of living is a lot lower, but their wages are also lower. And even out there, it's it would be, it's tough to survive, yeah. Very tough to survive. And and these people are, you know, living on far less in terms of, you know, what what they have available to them. Yeah, it's it's tough. I mean, I mean, like, desolate. What are they spending their money on, and they still can't make it?
Yeah, right.
I went to college in Maine, and when I was in, this is the early to mid nineties, but I remember a town where my college was located was struggling, because I think when we made that transition from the Cold War to post-Cold War, a lot of economies actually when we made that transition from the Cold War to post-Cold War, a lot of economies actually depended on the defense industry. And I, and and when, and when we wound down, uh, defense spending, which which understandable because we were no longer, um, had a rival, but nonetheless, it did impact a lot of communities that relied on perhaps a local factory for jobs and 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 but but gone now. We're always gone at that time, you know, so.
Yeah, New England had a lot of, it just a lot of the defense industry, um, bit, uh, economy, didn't it?
Yeah.
Rifle makers, Winchester, that kind of thing.
Well, you know, we, we ask each guest to bring an item of of significance with them that ties, you know, into who they are and a little bit about them. Unfortunately, you couldn't bring yours today, but but what was your, what was your item of significance?
My own significance, um, was my dog. And the reason why I couldn't bring her is because, well, she's sixteen years old, and so she's a very, uh, elderly dog. But it's because, well, I've had this dog, um, for eight years now. Even though she's sixteen years old, um, she was originally from the Humane Society Shelter in San Gabriel. And unfortunately, she was, I guess, I don't know if it was abandoned or, uh, found wandering alone, but, you know, she eventually, uh, wanted my home. But, you know, pets are so wonderful. I mean, I mean, especially, I think during the pandemic, you saw a lot of people who, because of social isolation, turned to adopting pets as their companions, uh, although I've had this pet before the pandemic. But, you know, it, when you have, I think, um, uh, the opportunity to raise um, a cat or dog or 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 a hamster, you know, it 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 does in many ways keep you anchored as much as having children or being married. And I think that, um, especially because I've always been fortunate that growing up, I had, um, several pets growing up, um, but certainly, I think I'm very grateful that I have, um, my little dog.
What is, what is your do, uh, is is it a male or female?
Male. Her name is Mia.
Mia, and and what is the breed?
According to the shelter, she is part Chihuahua, part fox terrier. But, um, she is, um, even when I adopted her, uh, eight years ago, she was a very quiet, low energy, uh, a dog, but
I would never make that assumption about a Chihuahua fox terrier.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, you, me, my, my, my dog, I mean, I mean, she's, she's, I mean, I, well, I I do wonder, is it because I never know what her life was prior to, uh, coming to my home, but, you know, if she did, like, live on the streets, um, you know, maybe she's very grateful to have a home. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I mean, I think, um, along, I think, you know, having, uh, food in her bowl and a warm place to live, you know, I think probably makes her very grateful. Uh, but but I also think that it also gives you perspective as well, because I think as, as us, you know, bipedal humans, um, you know, we go through our daily stresses of, uh, uh, that, you know, from material to professional success. And and yet, when you look at a pet like my dog, I mean, it's just the basics that make her happy and 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 perhaps, you know, that's a lesson on what we should value as important in life.
Sure. My my friend Danny has two therapy dogs, and I remember going to his house and playing with them. And, you know, it's not like I'm a dog whisperer or anything, but he's asking me what I thought about one of them. I was like, it seems like they're, they're just this like one percent of mistrust. And he's like, exactly. Like, because the this dog may have been abused or something, so they still, they still like allow you to be close to them, but they 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 never relinquish like hundred percent, this dog anyway. But, well, that's, uh, I wish we could have met Mia. Um, hopefully, we can get a picture for the, for the YouTube show. So what are, what are your, what are your current struggles in your position, or what is it, one of the biggest struggles that you've had professionally?
Well, let's see, um, hmm, okay, after I admit a couple of ways, I suppose if I were to answer from the perspective of being a current council member, then it is how do we address those issues that I've raised before? Um, so right now, I have been pushing for the city to adopt inclusionary housing ordinance so that any developer has to do set aside of housing that, um, you know, allows people mixed incomes to be able to live in any new developments. Uh, otherwise, you know, if if it's all market rate, then you're talking about something that could either go for two to three thousand dollars for rent or sell for like eight hundred thousand dollars. And and so I think it's really important. Well, there's a lot of, I mean, housing is a very complex issue, but I think that part of the conversation is, but how do we also facilitate development that doesn't favor just one income, but a cross section of income, which I think any healthy community needs to have. A cross section of of, um, people of different incomes living together. I have been pushing our city to update its climate action plan because
Um, before we go on to that, sorry, is is greed the obstacle there?
You mean housing?
Yeah, in convincing developers to do this, is that, is that what's difficult to overcome?
Okay, I, I don't want either word greed, because that implies that somehow there's malfeasance in it. Um, I mean, we drive investors and developers, and if they, a- and perhaps it's the system, the regulatory system in which they work within, that encourages them to build certain types of housing. You know, I I know in the beginning I may have touched upon Prop thirteen, which I think many Californians will know what that is. And certainly, you know, i- I'm sure we will continue to debate, um, Prop thirteen until the end of time. But certainly, one of his impacts it's had on communities is because it shifted revenue to Sacramento. And what they get back are a portion of sales tax revenue. And so what's that done is that it forced cities over the decades to essentially dollarize their development and prioritize commercial development over housing, because that's how you generate revenue. But consequentially, it also probably means that land that could have been used for housing, zone for housing, um, uh, was then zoned for commercial. Although in recent years, we've, we've decided to allow mixed-use development. But but nonetheless, I think that our regulatory, uh, policies may discourage a developer to have the incentive to build housing that, again, accessible to a cross section of different income. So I think that's where we, at any level, if we have the ability to look at this policy issue, then we should address it.
Sorry to cut you off. Um, you're going to climate, climate issue.
About climate, because I think we all acknowledge that climate, um, change is an existential threat to our community, and it it's going to take all of us working together to address it. And 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 yes, change does begin at the local level, and so absolutely, um, you know, I'm pushing for the state to update uh, an existing climate action plan, to do our part, uh, to be more green, to be more resilient to the impacts of climate change, and also to, uh, conserve our resources. Mobility, as I mentioned, um, you know, we, you know, reading in newspapers that as we come out of this pandemic, I mean, I know we're still in a pandemic, but I guess as we move from pandemic to endemic, you know, we're seeing old patterns come back, like traffic and, uh, traffic, uh, creates dangers to pedestrians. It also exacerbates air pollution, quality of life. And so, you know, I've been advocating for, well, how can we adopt more active transportation? Encourage more mass transit, encourage alternative modes like bicycling, um, or making our streets safer for pedestrians. Um, and so those are quality of issues that I've been working on. Um, and it's been struggled because I think probably a week after the election, uh, because my election was in March of twenty twenty is when the World Health Organization declared a pandemic. And I've, like all elected officials, um, have been dealing with how do we keep our communities safe during a pandemic? Uh, you know, and 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 again, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that our community has rallied together. I I I think we had one of the highest rates of vaccinations in the area, but as we move, uh, into an endemic, you know, those issues, quality of life issues, uh, you know, they're still there. And so how do we, uh, address them?
Yeah, I I think regardless of how people may feel on on climate change, being good stewards of our resources is important, like being good stewards of our, of our earth and land and just taking care of it, like that should matter, you know?
Absolutely. And you know, there are so many examples from, in, if you, um, from archaeological, uh, finds that shows what the implications that if we are not good stewards. I can probably recall seeing programs on that PBS show Nova, uh, that talks about ancient civilizations, like those that existed in Mesopotamia before, uh, the Europeans came and and in places like, um, Angkor Wat in Cambodia, where, uh, you know, archaeological, archaeological research has uncovered that, um, climate change contributed to decline of some of these civilizations, but some of that climate change was probably human, uh, induced.
Angkor Wat, Angkor Wat is really interesting. It's such a enigma.
Right.
If you learn about Angkor Wat.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'm, I'm interested to know, especially because, you know, it's my hometown, uh, any, any vision, any plans for the future that you have that you're seeing, uh, taking shape from Monterey Park. But, uh, let's take a quick break and we'll be right back.
Sure.
The legal process can be intimidating. You don't know where to start and you're unsure of what to expect. The attorneys and staff at the law offices of Scott Warmouth have been serving the San Gabriel Valley for over thirty-five years. Helping people just like you navigate through the legal process and ensuring you're treated fairly. You can find them at laweighteighteight.com or call six two six two eight two six eight six eight. That's six two six two eight two six eight six eight.
All right, we're back with Monterey Park Mayor Henry Lowe. Uh, before the break, I asked you, you know, what do you see in the future coming to, to life now for Monterey Park? I'm interested in that.
Well, I I think, um, my hope, um, is that in the next few years, we'll lay the groundwork for what I hope is a, uh, more livable community. Uh, I mean, I think that's really where, um, you know, I'm, I I my goal is, you know, how do we take the so many positive attributes we have of our community, um, that Monterey Park is known for already, uh, but how do we, you know, continue to improve upon the product and make it more livable for those who live there currently and those who may want to, uh, move in and live there in the future?
Yep. You know, Monterey Park is so vast. I I guess I don't know how how big it is, but from like Hellman and McFerrin, which is where I grew up.
Hmm, okay.
To the sixty, right? Like all the way down there. And it's so, there's so many different areas and pockets, like there's Highlands by Luminaryus and
Yeah.
And then you've got all the commercial corridor there down Atlantic and and then, yeah, like over to the, o- overlooking the sixty free, or the, uh, what is that? The, uh, the freeway, yeah, where Luminaryus, yeah, is it?
The sixty free, Pomona.
No, no, but I'm thinking, uh, it's going north, south. It would be the Long Beach.
Oh, Long Beach, yeah, 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 the ten and ten freeway, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, and I forgot how hilly it is. I mean, going down Garfield, like, you know, El Repetto on the west side, and then there's even hills where like Upper La Loma, I think the park is, that's way up on the hill.
There's thirteen parks in, yeah, um, um, there's La Loma, there's, um, the Edison Trail, which is a one-mile trail in our city.
But you say there's thirteen parks in Monterey Park? Wow, that's a lot.
Yes, yeah, um, I live by one, um, I live by Garvey Ranch Park.
Okay.
Uh, which is interesting because I used to serve on the Garvey School Board and, and so I guess it's called Garvey Ranch Park because it was, um, Richard Garvey, one of our founding fathers, Richard Garvey, I guess, his ranch, and and then it became a park.
Right, yeah.
Do you ever, you know, just sit back sometimes, wake up maybe in the m- middle of the night or whatever and and think, wow, I'm the mayor of a city? And and how does that feel? Does it feel pretty cool? I mean?
You know, it it, interesting enough, I think maybe it, I come to realization when I think other people's reaction, um, because I think when you're in a position or you're in the middle of work, you don't think about it. I mean, I mean, I I I never thought of myself, I'm the mayor, wow, you know, um, uh, maybe because there's work to do. Uh, there's, there's a lot of work to do, um, but when friends and family say, wow, you're the mayor, that's impressive. I I I guess maybe that's what hits home, um, you know, but but it doesn't hit me.
You you get tired of hearing it then, after a while?
Well, you know, it it's, I guess maybe because to me it's just a title, um, and and it, I obviously, look, I mean, one, well, one shouldn't run for office just for fame, because, because if your, if your goal is, is fame and fortune, then there are different jobs and ways of doing it, or, you know, if you want fame, then yeah, then go on TikTok or YouTube. Um, uh, because, you know, you, you, you run because you want to serve the community. And if that community has, puts its faith in you, and you are fortunate enough to have earned that faith and that trust, then you need to honor that faith they put in you and try and do the best you can. Um, because, you know, I once heard, um, an elected official say, because unfortunately I can't, uh, uh, s- say this, um, with a wisdom, but I once heard an elected official say that, you know, you should always look at your terminal office as a finite amount of time, but then it's also a finite amount of time to do good. And, um, I think that's how I I do view, uh, view my term is that, um, you know, it's four years. And I think it is a limited amount of time, but it's also a wonderful opportunity to try and do as much good as you can in in the time you have, because one, number one, you shouldn't take for granted that you'll get reelected. I think that's a little arrogant. And I think you should always view the term you've been elected to as possibly your only term or your last term. Um, and and I think when you use that perspective, then it allows to focus on, on the issues at hand.
Wow, that that sounds really good. If I'm, if I'm, uh, living in Monterey Park, I would, I would feel good to hear that.
Okay.
Definitely. Well, uh, we've definitely got to know a lot about, uh, your passions and what drives you. And hopefully, there's a lot of good in store for for Monterey Park's future. But, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna dig a little bit into, uh, some of the things that you enjoy, uh, not just in Monterey Park, but in the entire San Gabriel Valley.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, it's now the time of the show we call SGV three.
Okay.
So let's dig into some of like your own three favorite things to do or to go to or to see, you know?
Sure.
So what's number one?
Oh, okay, well, we're ranking, um, let's see.
Okay, you don't have to rank, but anyway, let's start with number one.
Um, okay, no, no, you know what? Sure. Number one, my, and 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 obviously I'm biased because I'm going to probably, um, let's, I'll talk about my top three return in the city I live in, um, but I would say our Cascades Fountain.
Oh, you know, that's funny. Before you said the fountain, I was visualizing the fountain.
Yeah.
Isn't that funny? Maybe that, because it's a symbol of Monterey Park.
It's a city seal. It has, it it's, it's interesting because it it's where our beginnings were. In fact, I know, Russ, you mentioned about its history as even before the wave of, um, people from one, around the world who wanted to come to Monterey Park. It was conceived in nineteen twenties, um, as another Beverly Hills and what is now known as Cascade was a marketing gimmick much like the Hollywood sign was a gimmick at the time. Um, but, you know, the fountains come, is is, well, it it's situated in a, in a beautiful, uh, green space. Many people come, uh, to watch the fountain at night or even daytime to enjoy the open space, uh, to, uh, gather with friends and family. But I've also appreciated the fountain because it's also been a way to, I think, express the values of the city. And I'll give you an example is, um, you know, we've been, uh, probably glued to, uh, the news about what's happening in Ukraine. The unfortunate things are happening in Ukraine. And recently at the city council, we were able to direct our staff to bring forward a resolution to express solidarity to people of Ukraine, and they will be on the city council agenda tomorrow. Uh, but, uh, we've also been able to direct our staff to light, uh, the fountain at night in the color of the Ukrainian flag. In fact, if you drive down tonight, when it's dark, you'll see, um, it is lit in blue and yellow.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's, that's really nice. Is there any particular, uh, tie to Ukraine with the city of Monterey Park?
Not that I know of.
No sister cities or no big population?
No big populations, you know, but nonetheless, uh, when you think about how over a million people have been displaced by this conflict and, um, uh, and and certainly, we may not have, you know, a strong connection, uh, to the Ukrainian community, but nonetheless, we have people who have, who live in Monterey Park, who are themselves, uh, probably were refugees or have families that had to flee somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, and and so certainly, uh, it's, it's humanitarian crisis what's happening in Ukraine. But but that fountain, um, as I've said, has been, we've been able to use it also to express where we are with the values. And and so, you know, I I I, again, I encourage anyone to come down at night to look at the fountain. Right now, yeah, it is lit in blue and yellow.
And it's located right off Atlantic Boulevard at, uh, where is that?
Uh, I, El, I want to say El.
Oh, oh, yeah, it's El Repetto, isn't it?
Well, it's located in the same area where, uh, one of our historic buildings, Ellen Canto is.
Oh, yeah, right, right. All right, how about another memory or favorite thing?
I would say, um, again, also Monterey Park, um, that is, uh, probably the Edison Trail. Um, and and you've heard me talk a lot about, uh, how fortunate we have with so many, uh, recreational spaces and parks. One of them, um, i- is this trail called the Edison Trail. It's only a mile long, but, um, it I it it, but it's like in the middle of this bigger area, I don't mean Monterey Park, but Southern California, and people can, uh, do small hikes at the trail, and it leads to, um, a park by Garfield, um, but, um, it's, it just encourages people to be outdoors, encourages people to really appreciate, um, uh, the open spaces they have and to exercise. I think that, um, you know, when communities that are park poor, uh, it 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 creates conditions where, you know, you hear about obesity or sedentary lifestyles, and 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 that's in urban areas like Los Angeles, uh, Southern California, uh, where states have shown we are park poor. or sedentary lifestyles and, and, and that's in urban areas like Los Angeles, uh, Southern California, uh, where states have shown we are park poor per capita. It, it's number one, um, you know, we should always strive to, uh, address that, to, um, create more open spaces. But then to also really appreciate the spaces we have. And so I often tell people, friends who live outside Monterey Park, they'll, if you come visit me, let's go for a little mini hike and, you know, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll have a picnic, you know? Or maybe once we're done with a little one mile hikes and go down and have them some at NBC restaurant or something, you know?
Yeah. Where, where are they located?
Uh, see, Edison Trail, you can find off of, um, let's see, I want to, it's, it's, um, on Garfield, south of El Repetto. The trail, well, that's one location where the trail ends, but, um, it's, it traverses, um, to one of our neighborhoods.
El, El Portel.
Oh, that's it. Yes.
Is the.
Is Caskey Fountain.
Or the waterfall.
Yeah, waterfall. And then Edison Trail. Yeah, you, you can look it up, um, um, and, 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 uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's right in the middle of the city.
And how about a third?
The third, which also is in Monterey Park, is East L.A. College. It's, it's, well, East L.A. College, I think we are so fortunate to have such a esteemed higher institution of learning in our city. I remember as a kid taking, I think, algebra, um, there many years ago. But, um, it is a cultural jewel in our city because it's not just institutional higher learning, but it also has the Vincent Price, um, gallery.
Yeah.
And it has partnerships with renowned institutions of, of art like, um, Lacma. And, um, there are exhibits ongoing, um, at the Vincent Price, uh, gallery of, of, um, galleries that are part of Lacma. But also it, it promotes, uh, local talents as well. But I mentioned East L.A. College because it is such, you know, you hear me talk a lot about, about education, about how do we build bridges of opportunity? And East L.A. College is that engine of, 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 of dreams. Because, um, you have people, uh, who again, maybe the first in their family to go to college and that first step is attending, uh, community college. Also because of our location, um, we have also welcomed a lot of international students from around the world who have, uh, attended college, East L.A. College. And when we talk about workforce development, uh, mid-career development, academic enrichment, um, it's, it, it is such a wonderful institution. And I bring it up also because it ties back to my previous life as a school board member. Because when I was on the school board, I was able to work with the leadership of East L.A. College at that time and actually build a partnership. Um, so for a time, ELAC, East L.A. College was actually leasing one of our campuses, um, Williams Elementary, which is in Rosemead, but, um, East L.A. College was trying to look for a way to bring its classroom closer to the community. And we actually built a partnership in which, um, ELAC was leasing the campus of Williams Elementary School and it became a satellite campus. And if, and it's, Williams is located off of Del Mar.
Yeah, I've seen it. Right. Yeah.
But again, it's, it's, it's next to Monterey. I mean, you know, Rosemead is near the Monterey Park. But, but the whole idea is that, is that, um, how do you bring college even closer to the community? And, um, I thank ELAC and the leadership for having the foresight to build those, um, bridges. And, and, and for all those reasons, I, 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 I count ELAC as a wonderful jewel.
Oh, I love ELAC. And, and actually you've unleashed a lot of memories for me. Because when I first moved to, uh, Southern California in 1984 to set up my law office at that time, my first home was in Monterey Park. And when I say home, I rented a room from, you know, some people that, that had a condo there right on Garfield.
Oh, wonderful.
And so Monterey Park was my first home and I just have all these wonderful memories of, of it. And then East L.A. College, I took a night class. I started studying Mandarin.
Oh.
At, at East L.A. College and, uh, in a night class. And yeah, right. And then for, boy, probably 20 years I had my, my office was in Monterey Park. And so, yeah, it's a great memory. I, I, I love Monterey Park. I really do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, well, so do I.
Yeah, right. I love it more than you do. But here's the real question for me, which shows you where my mind is. Is the Marie Callender still open?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And, 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 um, you know, my, uh, if you ever have a question about what, what, what is one of my favorite dishes? I would answer with chicken pot pie.
Yeah.
Marie Callender's has one of the best chicken pot pies and I, and I feel so fortunate that there's one 10 minutes from my house.
Yeah, right. Yeah, good. Okay.
You know, that, that's my favorite thing also. I, I haven't had it in years. All I remember is like, it takes forever to come out and then it's like so hot that you can't eat it when it comes out. That's my memory of the chicken pot pie. But well, uh, Mayor, thank you so much for, for coming on the show. If, if people want to get in touch with you or support your cause, uh, how can they do that?
Sure. Uh, let's see, uh, what can, um, I can leave my email. Well, you can go to the city of Monterey Park's website, um, and if you look at city council, um, there's a link which you can email all five council members as well as city staff and, um, as well as, um, contact us. And, and, um, I do check my emails often, um, because we don't have staff because we're a small city. And so, um, if you, if you go to the Monterey Park website, uh, I think www.montrealpark.ca.gov and you click on the city council, each one of us, a link to email us, those emails actually go directly to us.
Oh, and, and you don't want to give your cell phone? Just joking. He'll, he'll, he'll respond to every text. No, I'm, I'm just kidding, Mayor. Well, uh, thank you again for sharing your story and I'd love to see anybody with passion about anything. Because, you know, that's, it's, it's, it's really a thing to see. And, uh, and for someone to show such passion for the community that they serve, that's, that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Scott, thank you very much for inviting me.
Yeah, thank you.
For, uh, this wonderful hour to just sit down and have a conversation, you know, um, it, it doesn't happen often enough.
No, it's, it's nice, isn't it? It's, it's just a good, good opportunity. And we're, you know, memorializing the whole, as I said, the contemporary history, I would call it, of San Gabriel Valley. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a nice thing to do.
And Russ, thank you for, um, facilitating this conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for, for being here. Well, that's our show for today. Thank you again for spending this time with us. If you want to get in touch with us, uh, you can always reach us at www.sgvmasterkey.com and we'll see you next week.
Thanks for checking out another episode of the SGV Master Key. You can find the full back catalog of the SGV Master Key at sgvmasterkey.com and wherever you get your podcasts. This show was produced and edited by Russell Mono and Victoria Allers of Kind Monster Productions. Thanks again for listening or watching. We'll see you again real soon in the next episode.